Proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder, the individuals who would like to view or listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by watching us live, by tuning into Comcast Channel 15, our Area 58 Government Access Channel. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access due to technical difficulties, recording or other comprehensive record of the proceedings of the meeting will be made available online as soon as possible. And with that, I would entertain a motion to go into Executive Session.
I'll make a motion, we go into Executive Session.
Can someone read the motion?
Anticipated Executive Session in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general law. Review draft minutes from Executive Session meetings held on 2/11/20, 2/25/20, and 3/3/20.
Is there a second? Second. Let's see, Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Bob Belvin?
Bob Belvin says aye.
Ron Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye. I will see you all over in the Executive Session.
Three dollars on each, yeah, so it's off nine dollars.
Oh, so I get it, but I just recommended total, so really, we're recommending it as is, which it would be okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And now the practical call point comes into play. We've got a motion, we've got a second, we're moving to recommend whatever Article 16 should be when we get a final warrant. I'll need it. Cal says yes.
How is everybody doing? Mr. Robertson, how are you, sir?
Life doesn't get better than this.
You're right, it doesn't. Kara, how are you? It's always important to turn your video back on. Well, so I have seven o'clock, so I will call the June 2nd of the meeting of the Congress Select Board back into session. And Area 58, if you could bring up my calendar, I'm sorry, our flag, I'd ask you to all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Area 58, you have the flag?
Open my door.
No, I do not. Give me one second, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Do you think you have it there?
I am, I do not, no. No, I don't.
Stand and face the nearest flag and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clark, would you like to read our community prayer?
I am afraid I do not have the, hold on, yes.
I have it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Belvin?
I got it. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can be. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility, and especially, we lift our prayers for the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve and that they may discover the fullness of joy of life that we all seek and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Let's see, the first item on our agenda this evening, if I can get my computer to cooperate with me here, would be an update on, I'm sorry, citizen participation. Are there any citizens here on the mic that would like to participate in our meeting? I don't see any, Area 58, do you see any?
I do not.
Okay. All right, moving on then, we'll go to our update on public safety from EMS Chief Tom Walsh.
Good evening, can you all hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Very good, okay. This update won't be quite as long as the others have been because a lot has kind of become just the way we do business now. Starting with the Board of Health, they report through the Visiting Nurse Association that there have been a total of 38 cases of COVID-19 positively identified in Carver residents. Thirty-one people have recovered, four are still under treatment or quarantine, and tragically three have died. Through communication with our Visiting Nurse Association, the health agent has been able to keep emergency services up to date on COVID-19 positive patients. The Board of Health is also preparing to open the town hall, reopen the town hall on January 8th, and Ms. LaFawn will share more details of that opening later in the meeting.
June 8th.
Excuse me?
June 8th.
June 8th.
Yes. June 8th. Okay, the fire department is fully operational with all procedures, protocols in place to provide services to the public while protecting the safety of our staff. Fire stations have been professionally sanitized by ServePro as needed. All PPE requirements have been fulfilled by supplies obtained from MEMA through emergency management. The list of COVID-19 positive patients continues to be maintained at the Public Safety Dispatch Center and at the dispatch center in the police station as well, and there are no Carver Fire Department members who have contracted COVID-19. Carver Police Department continues to be fully operational with no officers ill with COVID-19. The dispatch center, which is the Public Safety Dispatch Center, continues to have the addresses of residents who are positively identified with COVID-19 maintained there, and all callers for any service are queried for signs of concern that would prompt COVID-19 precautions. Our police officers can have not, according to the police chief, having our police officers not having to share cruises has been helpful. ServePro has sanitized the station each week, and all PPE mask gowns, gloves have been fulfilled through either Carver Emergency Management or Carver EMS. Carver EMS remains 100% in service with no cases of COVID-19 contracted by any of its members. Since we have transported many COVID-19 suspicious patients and we have had no unprotected exposures, our PPE protocols seem to be working very effectively. Our station is sanitized each week, and daily sanitation is daily sanitized by efforts by the EMTs and paramedics as well. The ambulances are also disinfected after each COVID-19 call and periodically at other times as well, and all PPE requirements have been fulfilled. The Operations and Management Department continues to do daily sanitizing of town buildings, and the DPW reports that they have made some changes in COVID-19-inspired changes such as no more than one man in the cab of a truck and social distancing on job sites. Emergency Management has taken the lead on fulfilling PPE requirements and is monitoring COVID-19 expenses to effectively manage any possible FEMA expense recovery efforts. So to summarize, all is going well with all public safety departments, and all challenges presented by COVID-19 are being well addressed. And that would be the end of my update.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any members of the board have anything for the chief?
Chief, thank you very much. I have to say, I got tested for the antibodies, and I don't have them, so that means all the patients that I've dealt with, I'm clean.
That's good news.
So I just want to say that the policies and procedures that we instilled in the same that you guys did, they do work.
I agree, Bob, they seem to be doing a good job.
Chief, please pass out thanks on to everyone, everyone involved, okay? We really appreciate all the hard work that all the public safety folks are doing, so. Anything else? All right.
For me.
Thank you very much, Tom, appreciate it.
You're welcome, good evening.
Have a great night.
Good evening.
Me too.
All right. Next on our agenda is an update from the Town Clerk on our election coming up on June 6th. Kara?
Oh, good evening, everybody. We've been super hard at work getting ready this week with the early mail-in ballots. We're finding that a lot of people have been returning them, and they've been utilizing the Dropbox, that's been such a wonderful addition, and I think going forward, we'll be using that more. And we went over to the school the other day with Dave and the school maintenance people, and just about everything's set up in there. We're utilizing the entire gym. We're going to be entering through the front of the building, there was some question, we wanted to look at it to see if we should have one entrance and one exit, but just to keep things simple, and we're not sure of what the weather is going to be that day, if there are going to be showers. It's really difficult for some people to, you know, walk all the way around the school to get back to their car, so we're going to keep it really simple and just keep the front door access area and exit area. We've received a waiver from the state to have less election workers this year, which makes it easier on us to keep safe. We are able to social distance ourselves in there, and with the typical town turnout for that election, we should, we should be covered nicely. We look forward to it, we've got, oh gosh, the pens are going to be wiped down and transferred back into a box when they're used and cleaned and then put back out. We've got every three booths available, so at any one time, we can allow 12 people in to vote between the three precincts. Everybody that I've talked to is excited to come, and I encourage the public to come out, you know, if they didn't early vote, it's still not too late to return your ballot, but it's kind of late to mail out an application and to receive one in the mail. I'm just kind of nervous about mailing them out at this point and getting them back in time, so I encourage anyone that hasn't done so to come out and vote on Saturday. We're really excited, I can't wait.
Kara, can you speak quickly for those that have received a mail-in ballot, just for the benefit of the public, what the deadline is to return those?
Okay, so Friday at noon, it'd probably be the last time that we're able to open the Dropbox to get in, to get it. If someone does still have a ballot out, they would still have to come to the school with it, and at that point, we'd just have them vote regularly because they're there. But anyone that has a ballot out right now, I urge them not to mail it and to bring it to the Dropbox, that way we can get it in and process it.
So Friday at noon, no?
They do have to go into the state.
Friday at noon, deadline to the Dropbox?
Yep, Friday, Friday at noon.
Will someone either be removing the Dropbox or in some way sealing the Dropbox so no one can drop a ballot in after?
I probably will put a message out there just to remind people of that. We put some messages out on Facebook, it's not the most reliable, you could put maybe 10 or 12 things everywhere and someone will still miss it, so I'm relying on word of mouth. I've encouraged the candidates too, to kind of advocate that, and we'll put a sign out there on the box as well. There's a process, we bring them in, we put them into the state computer, and then they're checked off on the voter registration list so that when we have those lists at the polls, we know exactly who has already, you know, processed a ballot through their early voting system, so.
Do voters show up on the day of the election, do they all need to be masked?
They should, they should. Everyone should have a mask when they come in, we'll all be wearing masks inside when we interact with the public, and it should be a really quick and safe experience. They really did a super job laying out the gym, so you're able to distance, there won't be crowds of people hanging around inside, so you should be able to come in very comfortably, vote, and make your decisions. I'll post a sample ballot outside of the school as well, so that way people have, you know, some room and some fresh air to view that as well, so before they come in, they should pretty much know what they're going to do on their ballot and be able to do it pretty quickly.
And of course, for the benefit of those that may not know yet, the voting hours have been changed to nine to three on Saturday.
Nine to three, yeah. That was a state recommendation.
Anything else you think the general public needs to know?
No, I just hope they come out and vote, I encourage them to do so, we'd be happy to see everybody, so.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Ms. Clark?
Kara, normally in a regular election year, 15, 20 minutes after the election's over, sometimes you've got the information to release for the results from the precincts and the results of the elections. I'm guessing that might not be the case this year, or do you think you still might be able to do that?
This year, this year, we know we will have write-in candidates. That may delay the process slightly, we have three precincts still, I tried with all my efforts to combine them to one, and I know other clerks were successful in doing that, but we decided we would keep the three precincts and we're going to have to tally them separately, so it may take a little bit of time. I would, I would say everybody should know fairly, fairly, you know, it shouldn't be too bad. I'm not expecting a huge turnout, our typical turnout's anywhere from 600 to 950 people for a typical local election. With the addition of the early ballots that we have this year, we may have a few more, which is encouraging, but just knowing that there are write-ins, it may take us just a slightly longer time than what normally would, it's not just going to print out, so.
And that day, that day when, after the results are tallied, you have all the write-ins, how will you be posting the results? Will they go up on the town website, or how can people?
I will come, I will come back and I will post them as well. I will post them, I will notify candidates, and I'm sure the word will spread fairly quickly. It's a, it's a happy thing to do, so we will make sure we come back here, and it's not a late election, so we'll have plenty of time to get that up on the town website.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, Kara, so at the end of the election, at three o'clock, are you going to go outside to the people that are waiting outside, are you going to read them out loud to what were the votes for each precinct, or is it, no, we're not going to do that until you go back and put them in on the website?
It will be really difficult if we have write-ins unless we can get a really, you know, good, accurate count. If I can tell people right there at the polls, I most certainly will, because I know that's traditionally done. If it's something that we feel we need to recount or do something, then of course, we'll have to, you know, take a little longer doing it. But anybody that's there, once we know that amount, the exact count, we should be able to tell them, and then the general public will find out on the website when we get back to the office.
What I'm just trying to explain is that we don't want, you don't want people coming into the building again for you to read off, would you go outside and have people wait at the front entrance to do that?
We might, we might have to do that, I know the law states that the candidates can come in and observe at the end of the night, that, you know, as we're tallying, they can, and I believe as long as they're distancing and they're quiet and respectful and we can do our work, then I don't see a problem with that, because that's, that's the law, that's tradition, that they can come in and watch, so as long as they, you know, keep distances and are quiet, I don't have a problem with that.
So just the candidates, not their supporters or anyone else?
I would say that we would, we would have too many people then, I'm trying to keep my election workers down to a minimum of 12, no more than 12 people in that room, you know, working, so to add, you know, what, 30 maybe people in there, on top of that, I think that would be too many, so as long as they can socially distance, they can, you know, come into the building, but I don't think it's good for everyone to come in, let's hope the weather stays good.
Okay, thank you, Kara.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the board?
I just have one question for you.
Sure.
Forgive me if you said this when I was out, if you answered this when I was out of the room, but, so I know a lot of people have asked, how not only will the election workers be physically protected, but how about the public? In other words, will there be?
Well, the pub, yep, the public, they're going to be masked, they're going to come in, I've asked, I know we've got a lot of hand sanitizers, so I've asked Dave, and he's going to give me some hand sanitizer, I'm not sure how, what it's going to come in, if we have like a hand cleaning station, or we just have a few pumps sitting around, those will be available. I have a very coveted jar of Clorox wipes that I held over from my last election that I've been saving for this one, so that we would have them. I went out and I bought Plexiglas, pieces of Plexiglas, and I brought it in today, and our wonderful guys are out back today trying to make shields for the tables when the people come in, so that way at least the workers have something in front of them in addition to their mask, and they can slide a ballot underneath them. And if we have to for distances, we can always turn our tables the long way, we've been thinking, you know, a few ideas, we're going to see what works. I'd hate to tape and mark up that beautiful floor, they just got done finishing the floor in the gym, and it's, it's just so nice, I'd hate for them to have to tape it up, so we will find a way to make sure that distances can be kept. And at any one time, there can be no more than 12 voters in there, because that's all we have voting booths for, so we will have someone at the door regulating who's coming in and pausing people out in the foyer area if we do have a crowd, and of course, if someone with a disability comes in, they're going to come to the front of the line so that they can get in and vote and head right back out. Oh, and I also wanted to mention too, it was really great today, Carol Julius has contacted Gatra, and they're offering rides to anyone who needs a ride the day of the election, so they can contact the Gatra buses and get a ride into the election.
Very good.
That's great, thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
Anything else for Ms. Dayhill? Kara, thank you very, very much for taking some time to join us tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, great, thank you, take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Next up on our agenda this evening is the awarding of the Robert H. Merritt Public Service Award, and I believe we have Dave Robertson joining us for that tonight. Mr. Robertson?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Your picture just disappeared, though. There you go, you're back now.
So every year, we have a committee that takes nominations for the Robert H. Merritt Public Service Award, and let me tell you a little bit about that award. The Robert H. Merritt Public Service Award was created and presented to Bob Merritt in July of 1996 by the Board of Selectmen in recognition and appreciation for outstanding public service to the town of Carver and for making it a better community in which to live. In 2019, the town continued to recognize the efforts of community members and opened the award to the public for nominations and continuing to do this annually. This year, the Robert H. Merritt Public Service Award is being presented posthumously to Clark Griffith. Clark was nominated for this award in March, and he unfortunately died in April. Clark provided a wide range of service and dedication to the community. At the time of his passing, Clark was still an active life member of the Carver Firefighters Association and has given so much to the Carver Fire Department over the years. Clark personally donated property to the town of Carver. The property was donated with the condition that the new South Carver Fire Station be constructed on that site. Clark has since donated money over the years to the fire department, which enabled him, them to purchase a high-performance motor for the fire rescue boat, equipment for the Forestry 25 UTV, as well as numerous small donations throughout the years to many causes and families that the fire department has supported. Clark also served as selectman. He chaired the Board of Health, he chaired the Old Home Day Committee, was a Shertliff Park trustee, and was a past president of the Cape Cod Cranberry Growers Association. Clark has received many Cranberry industry awards and recognitions, recognitions for all he has given back to the industry. Clark sold a piece of his large cranberry farm and donated the proceeds to his alma mater, Bates College. Clark donated land to the town of Carver for the creation of the Julian Southworth Park located in South Carver. Clark was also instrumental in the creation of the Young People's Alliance of Carver, Y-PAC if you will, where he purchased the Ben Ellis School, he renovated that building and assisted the founding members to initiate the start of the program. We will engrave his name on the plaque that is in the town hall where it will be for all time.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
My pleasure, Chairman.
Comments from the board?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank, thank you, David, and I think Mr. Griffith is a wonderful choice, so.
Great guy, great guy.
Great guy.
Thanks for not commenting wrong.
I was about, I was about to say something, I was going to ask you to please extend congratulations to his family for this honor.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Good thinking.
Absolutely. Any other comments from the board?
No.
Thank you, David.
Okay, my friends, have a great night.
That's it.
So, and next on our agenda is the joint meeting with the Finance Committee, but if the board will allow, I would like to ask that we take the 8:15 discussion and possible vote to hold the June 16th meeting out of order and vote on that now, because it directly relates to the joint meeting with the Finance Committee. So would that be okay with the board? Any issues there?
No.
All right, so I asked, asked Mr. LaFawn to put this on the agenda, I think for a number of reasons, we should have a meeting on June 16th, which wasn't originally scheduled. Normally, we're sort of into our summer schedule by then, and we're meeting once a month, but that was back, put together back when town meeting was going to be in April and prior to COVID-19, and I just think that we're going to have an election on June 6th. I think it's an excellent idea to get the new board together for a meeting prior to town meeting and just get the board settled, that's all, so I, I would like to ask the board to vote to hold a meeting on, on June 16th. And I don't know if there's any discussion, but what's the feelings of the board there?
That's fine.
I will leave it to the other members, since I will not be in attendance.
That's fine.
Okay, Mr. LaFawn, we don't need a vote or anything, we can just schedule that meeting, correct?
Yes, the chairman can schedule a meeting, yes, sir.
All right, so please include a meeting on June 16th.
What time are we looking at?
Same, same as always, Bob, seven o'clock.
Seven?
Yeah, it's our normal meeting day, so that's why I thought that would be a good date, so seven o'clock as always. And so back to our joint meeting with the Finance Committee, the reason that was... And uh, so back to our joint meeting with the Finance Committee, the, the reason that was uh, important to be held first. So the, the Finance Committee had an issue and they, they failed to post their meeting, which means we can't have a joint meeting with them tonight. Uh, I did speak with the Chairman, uh, Mr. Jermaine, and he would like to have that joint meeting on, on that June 16th meeting. So uh,
Oh, it's just regular meeting.
I thought it might be a good idea just to push it forward there.
Your June 16 meeting. Gotcha.
Yeah, so I thought it might be, I, I am informed by Mr. Corvo that we will need to absolutely take action on those, those three items there we have on the agenda with the, with the FinCon on that night. We, that's the last meeting that we'll have in time to get the warrant posted for town meeting. Uh, so that's important. Any, any discussion from the board there or Mr. LaFawn, do you have any thoughts?
Oh, the, well, two thoughts. Number one, Article 7 uh, is, the board hasn't yet taken action on the Community Preservation Article. And that was simply because there was a, I guess, a typo initially, um, that has been corrected. Um, the, initially it had referred to uh, municipal, municipal playground and it really was a reference to the reserve just for open space.
Right, that was the one we discussed at our last meeting, correct?
Correct, so that's, that is rather more of a formality. Um, I don't know if you wish to vote that tonight or wait until your next meeting, but I believe that's really a ministerial act at this point.
I, I think it is. We had a lot of discussions about that at the last meeting. Um, anyone have any, any issues with voting on that tonight?
Did we advertise that we were gonna vote on it tonight?
Well, it's on the agenda. Um, it's also under the agenda as a joint meeting though. So Mr. LaFawn, what are your, what are your thoughts there? Do we vote on that tonight or do we have to vote on that during a joint meeting?
Uh, no, you don't have to do it during a joint meeting, but, but if there's any concern whatsoever, you know, you're, you're gonna be meeting on the 16th if you have any concerns. Like I said, it's, it's more of a formality anyway, so.
Yeah, in, in the interest of being, being clear and transparent, why don't we put that off till the, till the 16th? And we'll do it all, we'll do it all there.
And my, my other point, uh, Mr. Chairman is, um, I think we're all aware of the, um, the concern of the Finance Committee regarding Articles 3 and Article 5. Um, and I, I don't know, I know that we've had some conversation and to the extent that whether or not the board has an opinion on that at the moment, whether or not that uh, you know, a decision the board may make or your preference maybe can be reported to the Finance Committee Chair to and maybe avoid the need for a meeting. I just point, put that out there to you, um, for your consideration.
Yeah, what's happening up?
Thoughts from the board?
Uh, you know, I mean, again, not to, I don't know how in-depth you want to get at this time, but by my way of thinking, in, in March, uh, we had one plan, uh, in, we had just reached the accord with Mr. Melonowski and we were discussing since we were going to be hiring a new town administrator, how that would fit in the budget. As I look back now, that we probably approached this the wrong way because whoever we hired as a town administrator, you know, Municipal Finance 101 says that that's who would be funded in the operating budget. And what was unusual was a, a two-year, one-time contract, Mr. Melonowski. So that when we were setting aside $99,000 to go toward the new town administrator, I think probably more correctly, we should have said if you want to keep it separate, $99,000 to go towards completing Mr. Mil, the commitment to Mr. Melonowski because you could use free cash for a one-time commitment like that. Beyond that, at the last Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Melonowski advised the Finance Committee that he had, um, he was going to go ahead and fund both his salary and Mr. LaFawn's salary, who we'd hired by that time, within the operating budget. And I gathered that they have a sort of a technical objection to the fact that it was moved, but I, I thought I heard that they felt they weren't consulted. But I know Mr. Melonowski went to their last meeting and informed them that he was doing this. So, you know, just by way of a little background, um, you know, so that uh, the board can, you know, take whatever action they want. But by my way of thinking, you fund the sitting town administrator in the operating budget and you've, you know, possibly uh, I guess Mr. Melonowski can be within the same line item, but you know, I, I just don't know why there'd be a debate about uh, you know, the fact that your sitting town administrator should be the person occupying the line item in your brand-new fiscal year budget. So, just my thoughts that you can chew on until your next meeting.
I agree.
Yeah, any, any other comments? Well, I mean, the board could take action tonight or we could, we could delay that action.
I, I think if you're gonna accommodate, if, if they've asked to talk to you, I mean, it's up to you, uh, because you can always take.
So I think they've, they've asked to have the joint meeting. We did accommodate them. There was a technical issue with tonight's meeting, so we had to put it off. But I, I think we should, we should delay our action until uh, the joint meeting with the Finance Committee. That's my personal feeling. So um, anyone have issues with that? No, no, okay. Alright, so that's fine. So, so moving on, uh, we have the FEMA floodplain bylaw, uh, bylaw discussion and possible vote on the House Bill and Warrant Article 17. Uh, Mr. LaFawn?
Yes, these two items are interrelated. Um, as you probably are aware from the literature you've already seen, uh, the, the towns are, 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 they need to have a, a flood insurance bylaw in place which delineates flood zone mapping. Uh, that is for the purpose, um, essentially for being insurable when it comes right down to it, to uh, comply with National Flood Insurance Program. Unfortunately, as you know, most towns in the Commonwealth are now struggling with whether or not they can even have a town meeting before the end of the fiscal year. Um, and the requirement for the effective date would be July 22nd. So in order to beat the date, so to speak, uh, if towns are unable to meet the requirement to have a bylaw or flood, flood zone maps accepted. I'm sorry, is there, no, in, in lieu of that, in the, you know, if that is the, the problem cities and towns have, uh, a act, a bill has been filed, uh, that would allow for the Board of Selectmen, in this case, the Select Board obviously, uh, to adopt the zoning amendment without town meeting vote. Uh, that would only be after a public hearing and a recommendation from the Planning Board. So, we have a town meeting on the 29th of June, that this town is now in a position to accept, have a bylaw in place. Um, what, it's a zoning bylaw, so ultimately it'll be subject to approval by the, uh, by the, by the state, Secretary of State. However, we, we would be in compliance, um, with the requirement. If for some reason we do not have it in a town meeting on June 29th, whether it's a pump, still a public health issue or whatever the case may be, um, we would, uh, we would be seeking obviously to have a legislative act in place shortly thereafter to protect us. So it's really a matter of, uh, I think it makes sense for the board to support both, uh, both the bylaw that's on the, that's on the uh, warrant and, and that has been provided to us by Serpents, um, as well as, um, special acts that would allow for abbreviated acceptance and the case we need it. It's also helpful to join our, you know, our brother, just the community throughout the state and helping to forward legislative act that may benefit all of us. So in effect, um, I'd be looking for the board to, uh, vote to support, to approve.
Rick, I don't know if it's just me, but you're, you're breaking up pretty good on my end.
Rick, you're, you're getting every third word.
Okay. May I interject?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely Sarah.
Did you understand what he said Sarah?
Yeah, he thinks it's a good idea if we, you know, approve the article. But here's the thing, we already have a floodplain bylaw. Um, I remember because I was heavily involved in it at the time and I believe it got approved at town meeting in 2012. We also had a deadline at the time and my question is, um, it, it says in here on page 11, I think, if you already adopted ordinance, please send your updated ordinance and a proof of adoption. So on, so are we, would, would we be sending the one that we updated in 2012 or are they asking us to update it again? Excuse me, in 2020? Because it's a pretty inclusive ordinance. Um, we followed all the state, you know, guidelines and I don't know what else we could change to make it better, but it's a question.
Yeah, no, this, this, I, I hope you're hearing, hearing me better everybody?
Little better.
Little better, okay. Um, this is.
Such that, you know, this virus has impacted us all. Like I firmly believe.
Catherine, I think, can you um, turn yours?
Yeah, you may need to mute your.
Yeah Catherine, I think you need to mute your uh, access.
Mr. LaFawn, am I correct? This is just an update to the flood, the FEMA maps. Isn't that what this is?
Well, we did that then as well. So that's my question, is this, is it really necessary to do both? I don't think things have really changed all that much, but I could be wrong.
Well, this is what, and this is what has been recommended to us by Serpents. And they provided this bylaw, uh, with the up, uh, which provides for the updated mapping. So this is, I'm going by the recommendation from Serpents.
Okay, that's cool. I mean, things may have changed, you know, it is raining more, so.
True.
Sure.
Alright, any other thoughts in the board? Is there a motion?
Uh, you're looking, you're looking for us to support House Bill 4720 and Warren Article 17?
Correct.
I, I move that we support both.
Second.
Rick, do we need two separate motions, Rick, or just will one suffice?
Oh, I, I, one is fine. One, one would be fine.
Alright.
As long as the votes, as long as, there's only one vote tally, that's all that matters.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any other thoughts? Alright, I'm, I'm advised that our, our votes should be uh, all roll call while we're on Zoom, so we're gonna take all these as roll call votes. So uh, Mr. Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Mr. Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
Ms. Ewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye. Alright, uh, moving on, uh, next on our agenda is a discussion and a possible vote to request that the legislative act pertaining to the transfer of Conservation Land Trust be contingent upon a vote at town meeting.
We, did we miss, did I?
Did I miss something?
8:10 and 8:15.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, ratified the police union.
Oh, we did 8:15, right, okay.
It is a previous memo, I believe it's a consolidation of previous memorandum of agreements. Would that speak to Mr. LaFawn?
That's exactly correct. The Police Union and the Police Chief have worked together to incorporate the last two MOAs into a, into a one document. As we all know, that's really supposed to happen after every MOA, but I think uh, you go from town to town, you might find that that's not always the case. So, so I, the, I'm not sure if it was the initiative of the chief or the union, but they worked together uh, to put together a document that they both, uh, um, both agree is accurate, uh, with regards to the last two MOAs. So, uh, so the Board of Selectmen have already agreed to all the provisions. This is just putting it into one document. And it's been suggested that, um, you know, it gets best to have a vote, to have a date and to have signatures on a cer, on a line on a certain date. I just think it's cleaner for everybody. So, in that regard, I'm requesting, as is the Police Union in Chief, that you vote to ratify this agreement.
Robert Belvin, I um, make a motion that we go ahead and ratify the Police Union contract and previous MOAs consolidation.
Second.
Second. Alright, any further discussion? Uh, Robert Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Ron Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye.
Thank you. Police Union will be very pleased. They, they were hoping that the current board would be able to get that done before uh, seeing where most of you are, were involved in those MOAs over the last several years. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to a discussion and a possible vote to request the legislative act pertaining to the transfer of the Conservation Land Trust be contingent upon a vote of town meeting.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Who, who are we at?
No, I think you, Mr. Clark.
Uh, we, this came up at the last meeting and um, the course that we had taken was to submit it to the legislature. Apparently because the legis, it took a special legislative action to create the fund in order to do anything with it, it needed to go back to the state legislature. However, nothing, then there was discussion about town meeting approval. Nothing prevents us from requesting the legislation that we submitted to the legislature, uh, the special action uh, to add that subject to their approval, it then comes back to the town for town meeting approval. And I, I would have no objection to requesting that we add that to the language submitted to the legislature. And I'll make that as a motion.
A second.
Yeah, just speaking myself, I, I absolutely agree. I, I look forward to getting town meetings, uh, thoughts on it. So I absolutely agree. Ms. Ewens?
Yes, so, um, I think that's backwards. I think town meeting should approve it first and I know that's not how we voted it. But I, as, if I may add, I also have spoken to, um, some of the people on the Conservation Commission and, and the feeling is that, you know, that should have happened in the first place, but.
Well, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I think we're achieving the same end and it's already been submitted to the legislature so that uh, and we can't add an article at this point. We've already turned down other people requesting new articles, so it achieves the same end doing it this way.
We have, and I also think the agenda item we have in our, the, the way our agenda item reads, that's not what, that's not how it reads. I think we're, we're asking town meeting to, I think we're asking the, the legislative act to be contingent upon town me, on town meeting, so.
Right.
Right, right. So, so at some point, whether it's in the fall or it could very well be that, that we don't believe that, uh, that we need that money moved tomorrow or in the fall. It may be a year. That would be up to the board as to whether or not you would allow a warrant article to actually, uh, complete that process if, if and when you choose to. So it, so going back to town meeting makes sense, but again, it would be, could be at a time and a, and a, uh, that you choose. May not, it may not be at the next town meeting. Presumably it would be, but then again, that's a decision you can make at a later date.
Ms. Mr. LaFawn, do you have, I know we discussed this at the last meeting, do you have an update on where that pending legislation stands?
I had a conversation yesterday with a gentleman from the Governor's Office. Um, and his, one of his questions was specifically why that we were seeking to have it done as a, as a governor's bill. Um, and quite frankly, I didn't have an answer to that other than that it's generally been my belief that those tend to be, uh, more expeditious, uh, rather than going through, through your legislators. Um, and so the way, that's the way I left it. He was gonna double check to make sure, he, he acknowledged he was somewhat new himself to whether or not it actually is more expeditious to go through the, uh, you know, through the Governor's Office rather than through our local state rep. Um, and I did mention to him that this was a, a likely request that the board would have. So to the best of my knowledge, it hasn't been filed yet. It's still waiting to be, um, language um, and process waiting to be finalized by the Governor's Office. So this is.
Well, but Rick, you hung up again, if you. Oh, you're back now, I think. We lost you for a minute.
Oh.
You might wanna finish your thought there.
Okay, well, I'm not sure where, where I left off, but uh, I spoke to someone at the Governor's Office um, and their bill has not technically been filed yet. He was looking to see, um, to get input himself as to which would be a, a quicker way to get a legislative act accomplished.
I, I believe going back to the conversation, that the, the reason we went this route was because we, it was the beginning of the COVID-19 situation. We weren't sure how that was gonna impact the finances of the town and we were looking to try to get this done in the most expeditious way possible. I think that's why we went this route.
Well, and, and again, I was advised that this funding was created by special action to legislature. So they're the only ones that can allow the redirection of it. So whether that's accurate or not, that's what I was advised.
Right, that, and that, that's.
Created by a special act of the local legislature town meeting and then it went to the state. That's how it happened.
Oh, I, I do think it's a good idea to get, uh, town meetings, town meeting stocks on it. So, uh, quite a while ago, I believe we had a motion and a second.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we're. Hearing none, uh, Robert Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Ron Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye. It is unanimous. Uh, town administrator update. Mr. LaFawn?
Mr. Chair, on a few, a few items tonight. First of all, just back on our financial situation, nothing has changed. Uh, the model that we had been discussing, uh, that I updated you at the last meeting and have discussed briefly with the Finance Committee is, is preparing for a seven and a half percent decrease in both, uh, state aid and local receipts. Uh, that's what we're, again, the model we still have in place, and the effect, in, in that we have to go down that road. It could very well be that the issue may be more severe, but, uh, as of today, the, the recommendation is still to go to town meeting, uh, with the budget and spending plan that has currently been approved, recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. So in effect, there's nothing new there. Uh, this past, past Tuesday, the Finance Committee approved a reserve fund transfer for approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars, uh, to complete the construction budget for the municipal playground. Um, the last items to be completed were, were fencing around the facility. Unfortunately, the, uh, there was some, I guess, some financial transactions at the very front end of the, uh, of the project. It weren't necessarily communicated well among the parties, so the, O and M department was unaware of those expenses. As it happens, the, uh, that's about the amount they needed to complete the fencing. Uh, the fencing clearly had to be completed. Number one, there were contracts in place to do that. And number two, the, you know, the, the facility itself without fencing would be, uh, would be compromised and quite frankly wouldn't, uh, wouldn't be safe. So that project will be finishing up, uh, probably within the next couple of weeks. Um, so I'll thank the Finance Committee for their, um, consideration. Um, Town Hall is, will be reopening next Monday to the public. Tom Walsh, uh, hinted at that a little while ago. He was nice enough to let me discuss it a little bit further. Um, the Health Agent and Board of Health have put together, uh, a, some thoughts on this and a plan. Um, we have conspired with them to some extent. One of the things we'll be making sure we have is a, is a flow pattern from the time people come through the front door. That will be the only entrance point. Uh, citizens will be guided through a, patterns on the floor and signage to be, to exit through side doors, so that nobody's coming in through the same and passing each other in the hallways for the most part. There will be, um, masks available, will be made available to the staff anytime they're in public hallways. They will be required to wear masks. And some of you may be aware, you've seen some of the safety glass that's been installed around Town Hall, uh, for protection of both the public and our employees. There'll be, um, some of the other items that were raised were, um, hand sanitizer at both the entrance and the exit for patrons. That, that covers the, the basics of it at this point, moment. So, it's pretty well thought out. One of the other, uh, items we probably will be doing is having somebody, uh, one of the current staff, staff people rotating to be, um, down in the lobby to greet the public, to make sure they have appropriate safety masks on before they enter, uh, when entering the building. So I think we're pretty much, um, I think we have it together pretty well. As the Health Agent says, this is gonna be a little bit of a, a little bit of an experiment. So to the extent that, uh, members of the public, the staff, or elected officials, think of or notice some, maybe some holes or gaps in what we're trying to accomplish, feel, please bring them to our attention. Any questions on that particular item at this point? Then I will move to my last point, and this is at a request of, of, to Chair. Um, apparently, one of issues in the past that a member or members of the board may have, uh, raised, had to do with the timing of the posting of appointments by the town administrator. As you know, there are, uh, many boards and committees that, whose membership is filled by appointment of the board, uh, by the town administrator. The Board of Selectmen has a, a number of days, fifteen days to, i- if they wish to consider, um, and potentially veto those appointments. Um, the chairman was, wanted to make sure that, um, at such time that appointments were made by the town administrator, that those would be done and notified to the board in a timely manner, so that the board could have time to post and take action if they wish to exercise their right. Um, so obviously I have no issues with that, and I, I think that, uh, that makes sense. And, uh, Mark, does that accurately reflect our conversation?
It does. I just, I want everything to be as transparent as possible and for the board to have as much time to deal with things as possible. I, I appreciate your, 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 your thoughts on that.
And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any, uh, any comments from the board?
Oh, thank you very much, Mark, for putting that on there. And, uh, I agree.
Well, thank you. All right, uh, moving forward, minutes licenses topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. We have the minutes of four fifteen, uh, May fifth, May eighth, and May nineteenth. What is the pleasure of the board?
Um, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna throw a wrench in the works because I have actually not had time to look at these minutes, and I apologize.
Okay.
The board can do what they want, but I'm just telling you I haven't looked at them.
Okay. Um, any issue with the board with putting that off to our next, our next meeting?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
We'll still have, we'll still have three people that were in, in attendance at those meetings.
We will. Right. Yes, um, we all, uh, Mr. Belvin, Bob and Sarah, we, we all were in attendance to those meetings, right? We have at least three people on each one of those meetings.
Pretty sure.
Okay, so why don't we table those until our next meeting? We have a request for eighteen one-day special licenses for Renaissance Foods. Uh, that is King Richard's Fair, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
So, I guess my, my question is, if we, if we issue these licenses and there's an issue with COVID nineteen and, and the various governors directives, do we have an issue there?
Well, I, I would make the motion to approve subject to, uh, confirmation to, to move forward by, uh, our, our Health Department, uh, our Board of Health, uh, and that all taxes have been paid.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All right, uh, Robert Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Ron Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye. Okay, we have a press for a con victual license for King's Fair. Um,
I'll make the same, I'll make the same motion to approve subject to, uh, approval by the Board of Health and that all taxes have been paid.
I'll second that again.
All right, uh, Robert Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Ron Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye. Uh, we have a request for use of town property, Shirtlift Park on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Make a motion to approve.
Second for discussion.
And again, that, that motion would be subject to any Board of Health or town requirements?
Yes.
I have a question, 'cause I, what is this one for?
It's for, it's in the very back of your packet. Um, and I'm looking for it right now as well. I don't think I printed it, so let me just scroll through my.
Right, it's a church, church worship service.
Okay.
By the United Parish of, Parish of Christ.
Yeah.
Pastor Bill Ketchum was the applicant.
That's fine. I, I missed that at the end there. Okay, I have it.
Okay, yep, I have it too. All right, so we have a motion and a second, I believe. Uh, Robert Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Ron Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye. Okay, so our next meeting will actually be on June twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, June sixteenth. And, uh, with that, community announcements. Mr. Belvin?
Okay, um, first off is, um, I wanna thank the Carver EMS, the police, and the fire department for their, uh, quick response there on High Street. For my wife got into a little fender bender, more than a fender bender, um, on there. She's okay, but they did an awesome job, so I wanna say thank you very much to all of them. I wanna say thank you to, uh, Community Access Television for taking care of these meetings also. Um, it's a great help to this town, and we really do appreciate you guys taking on this role for us. Also, um, there's been discussion of, um, proposed, um, demonstration on Friday. I, I think we need to discuss that. And, um, I don't know if you guys heard anything about that. And I know it's, it just got posted on Facebook, but,
I know that, I know that the planner, I believe, spoke with Chief Doofly about it and, and has been working with him. Uh, Mr. LaFawn, perhaps you have some more information on that?
Yeah, I do know that, uh, I mean, this morning, I know I emailed the boards too, but, uh, that there had been a request to the chief or a notice that there's going to be some demonstration. Um, apparently the word had already been out through, on Facebook and other mediums, I'm, I'm told. Um, it's my understanding that, uh, the, they intend to, there is a group that tends to gather at the Carver Square Boulevard. And then walk down this way, sidewalks, using sidewalks to hold sides. It's intended to be a peaceful demonstration, obviously. The, uh, the organizer has met with, has discussed this with the chief, her plans. The department is working with other departments in the region to, um, assist others during these similar, uh, demonstrations that are going on now in multiple communities. For instance, there is one in Wareham tonight, and the Carver Police Department is assisting them, uh, with just additional staffing. That'll be the case on Friday night in Carver, whether it's Wareham or, or other, um, uh, departments in the region will be assisting. Obviously, everybody's hoping for, you know, that it, they're peaceful. I think the, the general thought process is if these, if the people who, who come out are essentially Carver residents, uh, local residents, there shouldn't be any issues anyway. So the chief has made it clear, obviously, um, making sure that people have, uh, honor their First Amendment rights, uh, doing their best to keep, uh, keep things safe and quiet. And there's no expectation that won't be the case, but to the extent that there's any, uh, you know, uh, town property involved, that is not, that is not expected. However, as we know, this, you know, with public property is still public property. I don't know if, if there's anything more on that. Uh, Mark Doofly spoke to me just this afternoon, probably mid-afternoon.
So I, my, my feeling is, is that you have the right to protest your government. You have the right to assemble. But you don't have a right to, to damage our property. Um, it's gonna cost us, if anyone damages property, it's gonna cost us taxpayers a lot of money to fix that, whatever gets damaged. I don't wanna see that happen. Um, and also their rallying point of where they're going to be, do they have permission to meet there and, um, and park there? Uh, so that, that's gonna have to be discussed at some point with the owners of the property. So, and I don't know if they've been notified and, and have asked or whatnot, but my feeling is, is that if it's peaceful, fine, um, but when it transcends into, um, damaging property or hurting our law enforcement offices, um, I have a problem with that. So, um, I have to work Friday. I'll be monitoring just from work, but, um, I hopefully it's peaceful and everyone has, gets their message out with, they wanna get out, and they social distance as much as possible, wears masks, because if one person gets COVID out there and gets into front of someone else, you could spread it again, and you don't want that to happen.
Thank you. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. Um, I was gonna say a great deal about the voting, but I think our town clerk, Cara Dayhill, um, really gave us a good summary. I do, I do wanna point out that if you do plan to vote in person, um, please remember that voting day for a local townwide election is this Saturday, but they're shorter hours, so it's nine AM to three PM. I just can't say that enough. I hate to see someone show up at five, you know, thirty-five and not be able to vote. So there's truncated hours, um, nine AM to three PM. Our town clerk has really made an extraordinary effort, I think, to keep not only the poll workers safe, which is really huge, but also the residents who come down there. And she did lay that out a little bit for us. The public will be physically protected thanks to, uh, masks, hand sanitizers, and they bought pieces of Plexiglas. Um, and she said, the guys, I'm assuming that's the operation and maintenance guys, are putting these together to protect the poll workers, which also in turn protects the public, making these shields. So, and the last little point was that any one time, you can only have twelve people in the gym, in the Carver Middle High School gym, which is where the voting is taking place. So I just want people to feel comfortable. Um, running out of time for doing early voting. Um, Ms. Dayhill said that if you wanna vote absentee, at this point, you're gonna have to bring it with you on Saturday, because they have a, a process that they have to go through. So I do hope people come, I think, voting for your local, um, elected officials is probably one of the most important things you can do for your town. And, um, I think over the years, we've seen what happens when people do vote, don't vote, somewhere in between. So please, please do vote on Saturday. That's it.
Mr. Clark?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, one, one thing I wanted to mention was that town meeting scheduled for June twenty-ninth, uh, and at this point, it's still on, but for those that might be concerned that perhaps circumstances, uh, will not allow town meeting to take place, uh, for COVID nineteen reasons, although there's an expectation that hopefully we'll be able to put something in place that will allow it. Uh, I believe that the, uh, governor has already made arrangements for, uh, town meeting, people to waive town meeting and just move into the new year, uh, working off of the previous year's budget until they can have a town meeting. So, um, uh, hopefully you'll get the town meeting in June twenty-ninth, but just in case, the governor has already allowed that, uh, it can be taken up at a later time. Uh, just good luck to all the candidates running on, uh, on this year's election. Wish them all the best, uh, in all the positions that, uh, that are up. And, um, taking part in the electoral, electoral process is, uh, is key for every town, the health of every town. Uh, one, um, one thing that's left over is the Comcast contract expired last October. It's not unusual for them to run a little long, but, uh, the pandemic, uh, put everything really on hold. The Comcast has not had a priority of, uh, completing contract negotiations with us. We're very close. Uh, the issue that we're negotiating now is, um, a capital grant that would allow us to maintain upgrading equipment. So as soon as that's concluded, uh, I would return to the board, uh, to run through the contract with them for their approval, so we can put the new contract in place. Um, this being my, my last meeting on the board, uh, if you'll bear with me, I want to take, uh, the opportunity to say that it's been a privilege to serve the, uh, town of Carver, uh, and the board for five terms, fifteen years, covering three decades. Uh, the town has really changed over this period of time. We've built a new library, we've renovated the town hall, built a new elementary school, built a new fire station, million dollars repairs in the middle high school. Uh, we're building a new police station. It's really changed so much, especially the downtown area from what it was when, uh, I moved into town back in eighty-six. My two, uh, issues over time has always been the fiscal health of the town and public safety. The town is probably in the best fiscal shape it's ever been in right now. Um, by following, by the select board following prudent and strict, uh, fiscal policies that I would hope they continue to follow in the future. Uh, we have close to four million dollars in our rainy day fund, which we may well need dealing with this pandemic, but we are in much better shape than most of the towns around us as a result of the fiscal policies that we practiced over the last, uh, uh, six to ten years. Uh, our public safety services and personnel are exceptional. I think we all recognize that. We have a volunteer fire department that's better than the full-time fire department surrounding us at a fraction of the cost, uh, all under the leadership of Chief Craig Weston. Our EMT and ambulance services, self-funding through strong management, year of the year, responding to resident emergencies with speed and professionalism and. with speed and professionalism and saving lives. Uh, and that's led by Chief Tom Walsh, who's retiring, wishing Tom the best and, uh, his replacement. Uh, Mike Ryan, we wish him well as he takes the reins. Big shoes to fill, but I know Tom will be there to assist him as he moves forward. Uh, we have a police department that, uh, has always, well, certainly, uh, uh, right now puts the Carver citizens and their safety first. Uh, and with a new station, they'll be ready to protect the town in the future and Chief Doofly has provided outstanding leadership uh, for them. Uh, I wanna thank all the employees in the town hall that I've had the chance to work with over the years. Uh, the members of all the boards and committees that volunteer their time to make Carver a better place. I also wanna thank all the members of the board, including the current members, that I've had the chance to work with over these five terms. I did a quick count today. It looks like there's eighteen separate select people that I've worked with, uh, since nineteen ninety-four. And um, it's just been a real privilege to do so. Uh, and then finally, I just wanna, uh, say it's been, uh, it's been a joy to work with, uh, under Mark's chairmanship and I, I feel strongly that when the board reorganizes that, uh, you could, uh, you, you really should give serious consideration to having Mark continue as your chair. I think he does a tremendous job of, uh, guiding himself neutrally through what can be a minefield. Um, I think that, uh, I, I guess, well, you know, I, I guess I just hope that as we go forward, that people can try to remember to be kind to each other. Um, the last few years, the vitriol that's been out on Facebook, I, I, the passion, I understand passion. I've been guilty of it myself, but I just hope that people remember that, uh, everyone, all of you that are in public, a public life, you can have a thick hide, but it still hurts when you're taking a task on a personal basis as opposed to simply being challenged on your, um, your opinion or your decision-making. So I would just gotta ask the public to try to think twice and just try to be kind as you're approaching your public officials and in return, the public officials also uh, treat the citizens with all the respect that they deserve. And then, um, just a couple of other things that are complete non-sacred tours that I've always wanted to mention, and this is my last opportunity. Uh, the first is, uh, Dwight Eisenhower in his farewell address, uh, warned of the corrupting influence of the military-industrial um, complex. And I believe right now, we are experiencing the results of not paying close enough attention to that and it's something on a national level we need to pay attention to. And then finally, I am of the opinion that Lee Harvey Oswald did not act alone and there were multiple shooters in Dallas. With that, thank you all. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. And um, I will be in the audience, watching you in the future. Uh, but if I have any comments, I will be kind.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you. Thank you for all your service, Ron.
And, uh, Ron, I'll just say it's, it's been a, it's been a real privilege, uh, serving with you these last couple of years I've been on the board and, uh, thank you for your, your commitment, your long-term commitment to the town. We certainly appreciate everything you've, you've done for the town. Um, and I would just add tonight that I, I hope everyone will get to the polls on the sixth. Many, many people have fought and died for your right to vote, so please don't, uh, don't give up. You're right. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second. Bob Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Ron Clark?
Ron Clark says aye.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye. Good night, everybody. Don't forget to vote.
Don't forget to vote Saturday.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.